Really interesting. Yeah, really interesting how he considered the fold so heavily because people just under bluffing these four of all tournaments. It's really, really interesting.
Yeah, I mean, what are his bluffs? You know, like if we really think about it, like sure ace high, like ace high has some show down value. You can have ace five and when he raises the term with maybe some backdoor diamond draw or something like that. He actually gets called in on this kind of board. Like what, what hands did you have in your folding?
Um, and it's gonna have some misdraws and things too. So I think calling is the only option myself. Let's see if Boogaloo got away from it. Ooh, call a six.
So this is close between call-
Really interesting. So call a six, raise the seventy-five hundred is ten points. And I'm gonna say he said that because this is a very bad player. And so he thinks the very bad player is gonna stack off here with worse queens a lot. I'm gonna guarantee that's what he's gonna say. Very interesting though. I thought call for sure was the right answer. I never am in this spot. I don't know. Um, interesting spot too. I, I, I think this is a little bit of a lesson for everyone out there too. A lot of times the hands we want to float with, like this one, are better as, as raises. So this kind of falls back out of it.
Yeah, and he was kind of an echo chamber for us there saying, you know, we just get better hands to call and worse to fold. Like he's going to have some gut shots in his hand. He's going to have spades, he's going to have king X. And we kind of, I mean, we kind of identify kind of what cards are going to be bad for us on future skis. And we, we're aware how to proceed on those cards.
Absolutely.
So yeah, that's a very big point, man. You're right, you're right, you're right.
That was the best, dude, say everything you want. Straight up, you want, I, I, I just, yeah, I'm just.
Alright, so, ooh, look at this. You're not opening this. He just looked at this. You're not opening this.
Hi, Dackel Jack, under the gun one.
Come on, I'll open it. I, um, so let's see if he-
He's gotta open it or there wouldn't be a hand.
You, yeah, it wouldn't be a quit.
I'm already down on points.
You're already down on points in real life. Now, obviously, you're gonna cheat, but-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna evolve.
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna adapt, right?
Ah, let's play.
I'm going to cry if he says he's folding here. If he's like, yeah, you should be folding this in this kind of tournament and you were actually right. Alright, cool.
Wah wah. Ah, yes. I just wanna say for the record, this is the best three-point score I've ever gotten in my life. Because the right answer was fold.
But you heard what he said. I'm off the table.
This is a three K.
Here comes the excuses. Ten points fold, it says right here.
The excuses to open? If your table is particularly tight and weak, welcome to the five dollar two K world. I mean, you know, the eleven dollar ten K, I'm opening this, yeah, for sure.
This is the best three points of my life.
Oh, that's hilarious. Hey, everybody's-
Nailed it. What the hell kind of play is that from King Queen? Who in the- Who does that?
Who the hell?
Jonathan Little's an absolute crusher, so it's nice to have him.
Yeah, I agree, and I always love playing right after sessions like this because I feel like my, my brain's warmed up. I'm thinking through things and, and so it's a good way to start your session for sure.
Alright, alright guys, this is it.
What's up? You wanna give a gist? He was saying Narco Kowas playing about deep hitting about twenty-eight percent of hands. He had been very agitated in this, uh, ten dollar buy-in. And here are the options to fold, to call, to raise twelve hundred, raise the- What? Wait a minute, he made it eight hundred and my man's given options twelve and forty-two hundred. So it's already getting, uh, kind of spicy.
That's so nasty to be on the site with these other crushers in a well-known poker public figures is pretty exciting, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, I didn't mention that when I was kind of giving a little intro here too. You know, Assassinato, Matt Affleck, John Little, uh, all coaches on the side, so very highly respectable quality poker content.
Yep, Evan Jarvis as well. You know, remember Evan Jarvis, Matt Affleck, Assassinato, John Little. Uh, so I guess that just makes sense. He just have the ace of clubs in his hand. That's interesting though, I thought that was interesting.
You didn't do that bad, forty-five.
I like how you just pat me on the back. You didn't do that bad. Well, yeah, good job, buddy.
The back.
I agree with that. I got the higher score in the first one. I got the higher score in the first one, so, you know, we're one for one, buddy.
I just wanna know.
Calling, guys. Let's see if we're good. Similar situation. That's pre-flop? I think it's pre. Alright, guys, we're checking right now. Oh, fuck.
When you're facing a min raise or just a touch more than a min raise and there's an anti-inplay, which is gonna be the case in most tournaments, I think, going forward. You want to defend pretty wide. If your opponent's making a two-
Alright, cool. Uh, you're going fourteen hundred?
I'm going fourteen hundred, guys.
I'm gonna go call with the armadillo hat.
Alright, and that is for the-
I would fold the game though, for the record, in case Assassin. We're winning it.
Ah, you won. You win. I, 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 I have to concede. You win.
Fourteen K.
Fourteen K, let's do it.
Let's do it.
Damn it.
Mm-hmm. Where you gonna get my chat?
Get my chat?
They like, they like, they like naughty things. They like just beer, alcohol, you know.
Alright, let's do, uh, I can do a ten dollar ACR giveaway.
A ten dollar ACR giveaway courtesy of my man Toe. For me beating that ass heads up in this, sorry. We'll do this, we'll do, we'll have to do it at least once a week, man. And then, you know, we'll do it, we'll do it every week a couple times.
So it's time.
I guess we gotta give out ten bucks to each, each other's communities. We'll just do our own ten, ten dollar free roll for each. Or is that, does that sound fair?
Yes. Do you know what this means?
You win. I give his chat ten bucks. Take it.
So that's cool because we have two ties and then a win from you and a win from me. This is like the epic battle. It's perfect. It's great.
Yeah, we're, we're even stevens.
This is awesome. I love it.
You know who-
Stop. We got a giveaway going. Let's run the giveaway for the ten dollar ACR winner. Closing the giveaway, drawing the winner, my man Sevz, we're getting the ten dollar ACR giveaway for this one. Yo, it's that time again. It's the Saturday study stream. Feels really good, I'm really excited about this one. Um, I was super busy this week and didn't get almost any of my normal study in and, uh, I miss it. I need it. I was feeling a little rusty on the table yesterday. It's amazing like how just taking a few days off can make you kind of, you know, feel a little off. You know what I mean? Uh, just waiting for my man Crazy Sixes to call in here and he should be calling in any second. Um, and then we'll kick this party off. Looks like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine quizzes added since last week. Pretty darn amazing. Four of those are... Um, tournament ones and right away I see an Assassinato quiz. It's like sticking out here. Million dollar guaranteed final table live with an in over his head rack. Whoa. Whoa. That one should be good. That one should be good. Here he comes. What's happening?
What's up, man? How you doing, buddy?
I'm doing good. I was just talking about how much I missed you. Been so busy this week, I didn't get any of my normal studying and I was playing yesterday and I feel rusty. It's amazing how quick you fall out of shape, right?
Yeah, it feels bad. I mean, I, I, like, you know me, every day I'm in our group, like, anybody wanna go over some shit? Anybody wanna go over something? And then every, nobody's getting response. I'm like, oh, man, these cats are tired of me.
Nah, it was even worse. Like I was responding and then not being able to make it was terrible.
I know, it's, it happens, it happens to the best of us. Well, we're back today, man. I'm glad to get back in here with you, man, get back in the ring.
Yeah, I'm ready. I'm ready, I'm pumped. I feel good. I'm ready to study. The first thing that popped out, uh, on my thing in the lobby is a million dollar guaranteed final table live with a in over his head recreational player. So I know that's calling your name, but it's Assassinato. So it's a give and take situation.
Aw piss. Yeah, um, nah, I mean, shit, that's awesome. Uh, we should definitely look at that. We'll try it again. I mean, we'll, we'll live with the sound. Um, but yeah, I'm excited, man. Um, how's everyone out there doing? Thank you for joining us, man. We appreciate you guys. Had a fun little night last night. We actually won a little squirrel, but we got, we were three, we were, uh, three-way with Fallon. Fallon was also in it as well, so-
Oh, fun.
Yeah, so there was a couple other people. So it was good times, man. I was up till four AM, so here we are.
Not fun.
Yeah, I'm used to it. I'm built for it, it's okay.
I'm not. I'm glad I live on the west coast.
Oh, no. Wait a minute, do you see this? A ten K WSOP main event with aces. Is this the hand? Matt Affleck, you remember he lost deepest fucking the main? Yeah, hit them. Just, just seeing Matt Affleck with ten K main aces is just, I, I get sad. No, God, no.
It's so much, that was so long ago.
I know. It's not. I just, every time I see Matt Affleck with aces in the main, I think about that.
Oh, God, you get that little tear.
Yeah, 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 I get sad. I think, see, sheesh, the worst beat I've ever seen, I've ever seen.
Brutal game, man, it's a brutal game.
Yeah. What's up, fuck GTO? Good morning, my dude.
The wall in here too. What's up, buddy? Good to see you. Joe in the house. Cyrus out there freezing his ass off. He said it's eleven degrees outside. I told him he should move. Mendo Bruce in here early. What's up, buddy?
Alright, so you wanna just get to it? You wanna go through anything? You know, um, it's a little early, you know, we started off right away, but it's just whatever.
Yeah, you know, you wanna just kick off the Matt Affleck one and get warmed up with something like more standard poker play before we jump into Assassinato? Um, get the juices flowing, what do you think?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's, uh, jump into this ten K main with everyone's favorite hand, um, and see how it works out.
Cool.
Alright, wait a minute. Let me, I click my sound settings and make sure my mixer is gonna have this shit loud enough because it's always too low. Alright, I just blasted it, so we're good. I'm ready. Let's do it.
Alright, this hand, we pick up two aces. We raised up-
Eleven degrees will kill me too, Mendo.
Guys there, um, a weak player in the cutoff and a very tight conservative player on the button. Both call. And we go to a three-way flop. Queen hearts, eight of hearts, seven of clubs. Should we check? Bet fifteen hundred, bet two thousand or bet three thousand?
Alright, guys. Chatter folk, good morning, what's up, buddy?
Good morning, good morning, guys. Uh, what do you guys like here? What are we doing? What are you sizing? Let's see, C bet or not, we're at a position to two players. We have the ace of hearts and if you are C betting, what size we like? And if you like something that's not here, it's okay. You're allowed to say, you know, a different sizing. It's all about just, you know, getting better.
Yeah, no judgment here. Uh, we're talking out, all opinions are welcome. And this is just about getting better and learning like, uh, Sixes was saying. Um, I got a couple of three Ks and a two K streaming in the chat. I think people are still waking up today.
Yeah, it's early as shit. I don't know, I mean, I drank a bunch of beers, so I'm still tired, so I understand.
Which those are coming in with three K.
Yeah, I'm seeing enough three Ks.
That's why they said three K, say it's a little wet out there.
Three K, what's up, Drizzle? Drizzle, sorry. Uh, yeah, three Ks, I got nothing but three Ks in my chat as well. Let me do something real quick.
Yeah, it's a mix between three and two. And then Chatterfolk coming with fifteen hundred saying keeping this queen in and the draws. Um, I'm conflicted. Well, I do think this is a little bit of a wet pot. We have the ace of hearts, which is pretty helpful. And because we have the ace of hearts, I'm kind of leaning towards a smaller bet. So.
Because we figure we're gonna get called by an elastic calling range no matter what, so-
And also the heart of the turn isn't gonna be that bad of a situation. Consider, if, if that was the ace of diamonds, I'd be more inclined to go bigger.
Yeah, I still wanna charge. For me, I think, I kind of see everybody going three K and I'm kind of be, I'm kind of there as well. Personally, in a game, I would probably go like twenty-six, twenty-seven, something like that. Um, but that's kind of moot. Um, I do like a bigger sizing here. Uh, you know, we, there's a lot of hands that we're gonna get value from. Uh, we're still like a hundred big blinds deep. Um, I still do wanna charge some of their, you know, jack ten. I don't wanna give them too good of a price for fifteen. We're just gut shots. So we can start condensing the range. You're gonna call with some of it in elastically, so let's just start getting value.
Do you think three K starts to price out hands like jack ten?
Uh, ma-
Maybe two K, the dreaded half-pot bet?
Right.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm debating in my head.
Wait. Uh, yeah, I just feel like this deep, we can tend to go that, that size. If I was, uh, shorter or we were less deep effective, I might tend to go a little bit smaller. But the SPR here, we can definitely just start going bigger.
Okay.
In my opinion, you know, I think, I think that's gonna be good. And let me see, I think our hand needs protection three K. Does the extra K between two and three get us anything more value?
And more folds for sure. Two K is a half-pot bet. People always bet half-pots. It's like one of the most overused bet sizes in poker, in my opinion. And so people just half-pot bet for value. The half-pot bet, um, has gloves and so that looks like kind of just standard. Whereas three K means, you know, I have a hand and I want, I want chippies.
No, I was exactly there as well, Dr. HJ, about twenty-six, twenty-seven or something like that, twenty-five. But, you know, um, if we're gonna mesh those sizes, I'm just gonna go on the bigger side with the top of my range here.
Cool. I guess we're going three K. Everyone's going three K. We're going three K.
Let's see it.
Alright.
Um, interesting spot here, three ways on a board that's going to change a lot on the turn and the river on a lot of cards. So we don't wanna be building a pot here, but we still want some, our hand needs some protection. But these ranges should be like, it's not like the big blinds in the pot where he's gonna have like three, four suited and stuff. These two players are gonna hit this board pretty hard. So I think it's close between a check and betting two thousand, uh, for protection. I think betting fifteen hundred is a decent option too. Um, but I don't like the bet three thousand option because we're just gonna be bloating a pot on a board that's going to change in dynamic, a very dynamic wet board. So, um, but the only reason I think I prefer the bet two thousand is because these players are both weak players, weak fish, tight conservative. And so I don't expect like many crazy bluff raises and I just expect them to call and they're just not gonna raise. If, uh, there was a high roller regular, Adrian Mateos was on the table. If he had was one of the callers, I would almost for sure check, um, not to bloat the pot out of position. But in these spots against good players, you really just need to take your medicine out of position. I check and it checks through. Turn is the eight of clubs. Should we check? Bet fifteen hundred, bet two thousand or bet three thousand?
Alright, had to let my dog out real quick. I was not letting her piss on my hardwood floor, so I had to. Uh, nah, nah, nah. So my back door is open. But, so both players call, board pairs eight.
Wait, no, he checked.
Oh, he checked, but he likes two K better in game.
Yeah, he said it was close between two K and check.
I do agree with, in, with the respect of the board dynamic is gonna change a lot on this turn when we get called. Um, but there's also gonna be enough good runouts for us that we can continue betting. So I would have really liked to bet on this flop, um, understanding that they can apply a lot of pressure in situations. And I would prefer to bet with the ace of hearts a little bit more. I don't know.
On the flop?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see myself checking this one and, you know, I see bet less than you do in general. I don't see myself checking this one either.
Hell no.
Yeah. He went with the dreaded half-pot bet though.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I mean, it does make sense in these kind of situations, but I would tend to just be forty or sixty-ish, you know, thirty-five to sixty-five-ish, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah, me too.
There. It just feel, it just feels appropriate that we use, uh, a bet sizing when there's a lot of hands we can get value from. Our target range is a shitload of queen X, heart draws, straight draws. And we can, even though we're playing out of position and the board changes, it, we can just still play appropriately, so I don't know.
Sure. Absolutely. Wall says now he's betting three K now that it checked around and turns eight. How the rest of you feel out there?
Look at this, I mean, there's two flush draws now, another flush draw came in. Uh, is he gonna wanna check again?
No. Can't now, can't. Plus you blocked both flush draws. It checked around, so there's far less queens out there. Um, now because it checked around, I'm conflicted between the fifteen hundred and the two K. I don't think we need to bet big at this point. I think there's very little out there that we're trying to get value from, right?
So you're preferring to use a small size here on the turn?
I'm kind of debating it, right? Cause I just wanna get called by kind of most-
So you wanna target like pocket nine, tens?
Yeah.
Hmm.
I feel like there's no reason to go three K now.
So it's one fifteen hundred to get called by a wider ranger blocking both flush draws.
Right.
But at the same time, it's, there still are other worse flush draws behind these. It's not like just the, they only have nut flush draws. I don't know. Um, I would tend to go two or three K, but I couldn't see the argument for fifteen hundred. Kind of charging some hands, hmm.
Three K just seems like, when they check around, I think three K is, there's this less-
Hands that could actually call us here. We can get value, yeah. We're like condensing them to only having a fucking eight or something, right?
Mendes is two flush draws, yeah, see the two clubs, two hearts out there, so the club draw and the heart draw is out there.
Yeah. I would suggest, I would think they're buying a tight conservative. Now he probably checks his flush draw. I don't know, guys, what are you guys thinking? Uh, Dr. HJ says fifteen hundred to get called by wider, we're blocking flush draws. Yeah, I think I said that. Anyone else have an opinion on sizing? What are you getting in your chat?
Got a couple of three Ks and, uh, crickets.
The weak fish with thirty-nine say, see, with easy call, three K bet with either flush draw, I believe.
I do agree that they would call the flush draws. I just think we block them slightly and they're just being passive right now.
Well, just think about what fifteen hundred does. It just still, did we just create situations where we get called? Yeah, sure, wider, but we're still gonna be just check, needing to check back some nine, nine, ten, jack. All these kind of rivers are, that's why I'm kind of leaning-
I don't know why I'm checking those back. Cause I think a lot of what's continuing when a nine, ten, jack hits on the river is more likely to give them a pair than it is-
To give them something, a straight or something like that. Fair enough.
So fifteen hundred's a little small, maybe two K is the answer then.
Yeah, two or three K. If that's the case, if we don't like bigger, I mean, maybe two K is good.
Probably go like eighteen hundred, you know?
Right, right.
Or I would go like twenty-five hundred, you know what I mean? Something like that, so I'm kind of like-
That's where I was at on the flop.
Going with the twisters that I have here.
Right. Alright, I like two K, guys. I, I don't like this, fifteen hundred.
Now it's time to two K and three K.
Two K here. I'm always betting bigger on these boards. Maybe if I had queen six, I'd bet smaller item says. Okay, I see you. Oh, my is back in, so my door, my wa, back door is wide open. Alright, let's start this, I gotta go close.
You live in a good neighborhood.
Yeah, we're fine.
Alright, two K.
Yep. What the fuck?
I didn't get to meet you that.
The likelihood of one of these players having eight is, you know, pretty s, not significant, like I would say thirty percent if I had a guess off the top of my head. But there's a lot of eights in both flating ranges, all the, the suited combos and stuff. This weak fish might even flat like ace eight off, nine eight off. And so we need to be careful here. Um, I think I like checking the best. Um, neither of them is likely to have a queen since they checked the flop, so we're unlikely to get two streets of value anyways. So I like checking, um, betting two thousand's also an option just because they're weak players and they're not gonna raise enough and put us in tough spots. Um, and we block both nut flush draws, which is kind of helpful. So betting fifteen hundred and three thousand, um, it's kind of the same as the flop. I don't mind fifteen hundred, I don't like three thousand. I chose to check again and the button bets twenty-four hundred. Should we fold, call or raise to eight thousand?
I am. We check, check with aces, yes, Dr. HJ, we check back flop and turn some shit. I, on the board, I, I don't know.
Joe, that is a good point. He said he checked it twice here because he got busted with aces deep in the main.
Yeah, he just got, he shook every time he gets aces from here. No. Oh, yeah, yeah. We did, we just turned aces into a bluff catcher, I mean-
Yeah, I mean, at some point we're gonna get value, like I think he, we agreed with him and then he said, you know, there's not a lot out there when it checks around, there's not a lot of queens out there. But, um, at the same time, like, we're only losing to an eight, right? Like we, and, and all, uh, there are other draws out there that might still come along. Like you mentioned, jack ten, nine, ten, maybe something like-
Five, six of diamonds, uh, eight and nine, I mean, pocket nines, they might have just called tens.
Yeah.
You know, sixes that are just stubborn as hell, thinking they have two pair or just bluff.
You're probably not gonna get a river card, you know, a river bet from those guys. And then for the draws, things like jack ten, like you're not gonna get any value from them unless they hit, right? So this is a street to get value, I would, I would think.
Yeah, I, I, I think so as well. Um, yeah, I mean, when we take this line, and he can, he agrees that he played it sub optimally as well on the flop, so. I don't know. He agrees. Um, so yeah, in this situation, um, I guess we're not gonna turn this into a bluff. Like that's what essentially he was saying there on a turn. If he thinks they have enough eight X, ace eight and shit like that, he mentioned offsuit. If he think that's potentially in this guy's range, he's not gonna raise here and he's gonna wanna use a call.
Sure.
I mean, I can't see-
I know that these players aren't necessarily doing it, but for me, if I had ace eight, I would be three betting a pre. Um, but yeah, I guess it's still out there. I guess, so for the guys in the chat, what are you doing? I see Group Bruce is calling. I don't wanna go too deep. Till I get some, some response in the chat. You guys have anything in your chat? Sixes?
Uh, eight K raise BQBBQ, my dude wants to raise. HJ's calling, fuck GTO is calling. Uh, against a tight conservative guy, yeah, we're just calling, right? That's what he's saying.
Yeah, I mean, when they say raise, my first question is, are raising for value, obviously, not raising as a bluff. Uh, Richard Liz is calling. Um, and if we're not raising for value, what is worse that's calling?
That plays in a manner, like if he has a queen X, kind of what we're gonna be targeting, he would have probably bet in the backseat, right?
Right.
A lot of times, so-
The wall says, I refuse to talk about it after he went check, check. He's boycotting this quiz.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the thing with these quizzes, man, they're real life shit, people playing their game, sometimes they make mistakes, takes up optimal lines. Uh, we don't have to agree with it all, it just gives us a good point to study from, you know, it's interesting. Uh, but yeah, let's, uh, just call, we're gonna keep in worse hands from potentially both players by just calling as well.
And we protect ourselves in the event they do have an eight.
And it's nice to balance our range with a very strong hand here as a check call. And we're gonna keep the cutoff range in here with weak hands as well, so, let's just call.
I really think the only option here is to call, we have a really easy call, this is probably the best hand we ever have in this spot. Raising doesn't make a lot of sense, I give it a score of three, I think it's better than folding, we can still get some value if he checked back like. Queen Jack or something like that, Queen ten suited, we can get two streets of value out of that, but, um, yeah, calling should be, he bet pretty large to. Twenty-four hundred, sixty percent pop, so. We call, and the river is the six of spades. Should we check? Bet twenty-four hundred, bet forty-two hundred, or bet sixty-five hundred?
Alright, what are you doing, boys? Let me run upstairs and close this door, give me like two seconds.
We gotta talk about this one in a little bit, last street, guys, what do you think? Should we check? Should we lean into him? What do you guys think out there? We bring up a little multi-stream, now I can watch sixes chat. At the same time, while he's gone, oh wait, that's the wrong link. I hear him stumbling down the stairs.
Are we back? At this point, we have to just check again. Jam, get stacked and cry as we walk out, just jam, that's not even an option.
Yeah, Richard lizard, Cyrus, Joe, Charro, Mendo, the wall, Pete all says check call. Toe says check call too, no reason to turn, we bet doesn't get raised, we're in kind of a hellish spot, right?
Yeah, it sucks if we lead out here because we're afraid he's gonna check back too much. Um, when at this point, he doesn't bet a queen, so if he doesn't bet a queen, uh, if we don't think he like checks back a queen on the flop. He's either gonna have eight X or bluffs, right? So he's probably gonna polarize it and we just have a snap call.
Yeah, like you said, if, if the, if, if basically most of what he has here is eight X and bluffs. Then when we bet here, we get all his bluffs to fold, but when we check here, his bluffs might continue to bluff, right?
Yep, his bluffs fold and we get called by a handful of worse hands and better.
So Joe and Pete put on a good thing, nine, ten suited also got there. Very reasonable hand to be in the spot, for sure. Uh, cool, we're checking.
Yeah, check calling here, I think that's the consensus, consensus in my chat, so let's try, let's do it.
So should we just go check call and not ask about the next street?
Who said, oh, I mean.
We're gonna check here and then the next quiz is gonna see, what are you gonna do when he bets into us? We know what's happening, we're getting bet into on the river, so. Might as well just check and then check call.
Yeah, right, yeah, if it, if there's another option, do you call, do you fold? Yeah, we're just not calling, so, alright.
Checking here is always pretty much gonna, the, the board doesn't really change much, the straight draws, ten, nine, get there, but we never have ten, nine, cause we always be. Betting that beforehand, um, the only thing hand that changes for us is pocket sixes, but we wanna check that anyways for the check raise, so. Checking's really the only option that makes sense here, against a really bad player, you could leave for value, but. Gonna be value timing yourself a lot, we do check, our opponent bets forty-four hundred. Should we fold, call, or raise to fifteen thousand?
Already said we're calling, right? So let's just do the call.
Pretty easy call here, I mean, he can have an eight for sure, but he only bet half pot. And uh, against a half pot bet, we just kinda have a snap call, I would never raise here. Um, I would never fold unless he starts betting like full pot or over pot, um, but he can have worse value hands, like. Every queen that he checked back, he should be betting, he could even be betting. Worse than a queen for value and he's gonna have some bluffs and missed flush draws and stuff, so. Um, we call, and our opponent showed pocket jacks, so, uh, yeah, we induce two bets. We're probably gonna get two bets either way, but we also.
He probably, he's probably still going through the quiz, I snap called the fucking quiz, the call on the, going to the river, so. Yeah, I don't know, interesting spot, uh, we got max value from jacks, some guy just bluff, turned jacks into a bluff or two streets. Thought we would never check a queen, so he's probably targeting tens.
I'm doing the same thing with.
When he goes check, he just goes back, back, targeting.
Never checking, it's people with a queen, like you said, so Jack's the next best hand, right?
I don't know me, but in this spot, to be fair, you would check back Queen ten, you would check back Queen Jack. You would quite check back Queen nine if you open it from this spot, I know you would.
Yeah, but I am not the average, I'm the tail.
But yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, like, there are some Queen X check backs.
If you, if, but if this guy is, is good, he should have a balanced check back range and have some Queen X hands in his range, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, he shouldn't just go betting, leading out every Queen X on this board, so, I think he played tight conservative, fucked this hand up.
Okay, I would have, uh, done some things different, uh, I would have bet flop.
Then check the.
Probably. I'm probably betting flop, betting turn, check calling river. My betting flop, checking turn, check calling river, no, donk leading river, that seems awkward, right?
Oh, if you're a tight conservative?
If I was playing this hand my way. I would definitely bet flop, I know I would see that flop. Um, on the eight on the turn, shouldn't have too many eights, so I'm betting to get value from the flushes and the queens, so I'm definitely betting turn.
Good thing is, a good opponent can know he has more eats than you, make your life hell, so. Yeah, exactly, I mean, Chitwick's probably gonna make your life hell, you know? Having more, way more eight X than we do, when we're just betting and we just have a lot of Queen X and over pair, one pair, but, I got you.
Turn, check call river, I think that's what I would do. Cool, we got a weird one for Matt, you know, sometimes Matt goes a little nitty though, we've talked about. Sometimes it goes a little nitty.
Yeah, he does, I agree, we were talking about that, my dude does just randomly just take very conservative lines where I'm just thirsty as fuck.
Has anyone seen Matt's new video on decision making? I am not, where is that video, Joe? I'd be interested in, uh, checking it out, alright, back to quizzes.
Alright, is it time to just fucking melt our br- melt, let's melt our brains early? Yeah, yeah, um, also, I have to go to a kid's birthday party, so I gotta be done by like one thirty, so, dude, feels bad, man. Um, but yeah, let's, uh, keep it rolling.
Alright, let's go straight to a Sossinato then.
Oh, man, this shit's been.
Guys, if those guys are newer to one of these things, these volumes are gonna be kinda low, we're still working it out, um, with some technical issues. They're low on our side too, like, we're listening to them through the browser, they're low for us too, so you might have to pump your volume. Also, now that we have a few followers, our viewers in here too, if you're not, if you're new to the stream, this is the pokercoaching.com, study session stream that me and my man Creepy Sixes do. Every Saturday at noon Eastern, um, I record them, they go on the YouTube channel, in case you wanna check out some that you might have missed. Either previous ones or some of this one, X wish point PC in my chat, X place one P C and sixes chat. For you to at least sign up for free, where you get twenty-five free quizzes, a bunch of homeworks, some pushful charts for a hundred blinds or more, and if you feel so inclined to sign up for premium. There's over seven hundred quizzes, homeworks, challenges, there's a thirty day get good poker challenge going on right now. Um, pokercoach.com slash thirty day challenge, all these things going on, there's a staking opportunity, Jonathan Little will stake you. Um, if you prove yourself worthy in these quizzes and stuff, he does a little research on you, if you prove yourself worthy, he will potentially stake you in some live events. They just stake someone in the Party Poker UK thing that he's at, um, dude made day three, so, pretty cool, pretty cool, all that available to you, X mission point PC chat.
Yeah, that's taking shit is sweet, man, I mean, I seen they were staking people in one K's, five hundreds and shit like that. I mean, a free opportunity to play a one K, boys. So pokercoaching.com is staking players, check that shit out.
Yep, yep, and, uh, you get, uh, the opportunity to do it by signing up and even, you know, taking these quizzes and, and. Showing that you're a good investment, basically.
Yep, yeah, yeah, it's for members only, you gotta be a member of the site.
Uh, Joe said that, uh, the Matt Affleck decision making video is in Jonathan's weekly update email, um, it's called a little update. And if you are part of his email list, you should have that, so, check that out, alright, cool, ready?
Yep, uh, let's do it.
So in this hand, you have two eight of spades, you're in the big blind, uh, the villain is on the button, and he goes ahead and raises to two X. Uh, this is a recreational player, uh, you're at, you're at a million dollar guaranteed live tournament. And you have about twenty big blinds, he has twelve, uh, he seems like he's getting a little desperate. You've never really seen him do that much out of line, but you get the idea, he feels like he's forced to do something on this button, so. It's a fifty-one hundred K with a ten K ante, uh, pre-flop here, would you like to fold? Would you like to call? Would you like to raise to five hundred K, or would you like to raise all in?
Yeah, um, I always like to. So we can see the screen, um, yeah, yeah, so, uh, there you go. There you go, what are you guys doing? Uh, eight two suited in the big facing a min raise?
From a twelve big stack, whoa, I can't hear feedback, is that you? Oh, there we go, yep.
Sorry, I have my volume too loud. Wall says he likes to fold.
Anybody, what are you guys doing here? Anyone folding? Be, be honest if your ass is. I'll tell you what I'm doing here, I'm sure everybody already knows, fold, holy smokes. That must be machine gun.
Fold, is that too nitty? We'll find out, Joe, we'll find out, Richard, no one's playing this, Richard's folding, everybody's folding.
I'm, alright, well, it looks like everybody's done answering, I'm never folding this.
Bruce says, he isn't fold, but that's how it's gonna go five hundred K.
Normally I fold, fold, but Alex is creative, all in, hail though.
Everybody's folding.
I hate limping, you're not limping, you're just, you're calling a raise, even better. I know what you're doing, toe, and I know what I'm doing. We're defending, boys. We gotta defend.
One blind, any suit in hand, I can call.
Yeah, we can probably call here, we just realized equity had a flush draw, generally, if we make a pair, um, can be good enough to get in. Um, so yeah, we definitely call.
And a flush draw too, uh, you still going with it if you hit a two? I mean, obviously, it's not like king, king, ace two, but like, if it's something like king, two, six, are you gonna push the two?
Uh, you weren't here the day we were running these very shallow stack spots in Pyo with Justin. Um, yeah, we got some options, I mean, when we realized equity, we can certainly go with it, I think, uh, if he does see that, we have bottom pair, we can call. In some, eh, some situations, some situation, we can check raise two point five X as well, um, and then go with it when he shoves. So yeah, we, we have a lot of different options, rather than just check shoving, as weird as it sounds up at twelve bigs.
With the two specifically, I don't enjoy flattening, because it's just always getting, we know it's getting worse, 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 right? More inclined to raise on some level, then potentially go with it, if not jam, um. Just because we know it's only getting worse, right? Whereas if I had, if I had an eight and it's like, you know, I don't know, Queen eight four or something. And you wanna float that one, I feel a little bit more cushy, but, you know, there's a, there's a handful of undercards that could still come, not make our lives miserable. But with a two, it's always gonna be miserable, right?
Yep, I mean, the thing is, we can check raise when we make some of these hands. We can, I mean, not check shove, you know, we can check raise not all the.
I'm totally down with that with.
We're getting into a new, we're getting into a new level of shit, like. We spent a few hours looking at these very shallow stacks, but yeah, let's just call.
They're replaying Poker Masters on, I don't know, it's ESPN, I think, and so I recorded a bunch of them, and I was watching a final table. Um, it was a holding final table, and this guy, something Winters, I can't think of his first name, I think.
Sean Winters.
Sean Winters, he had a, it was a ten or eleven blind stack, and managed to find a triple barrel bluff with it. And I thought it was fantastic, which is not something I do a lot with a.
Yeah, Pyo loves, I mean, we still have playability with.
He ended up getting picked off by bottom pair, but I was like, damn, like, that's a great way to get bottom pair to fold in that spot, where he had an open and a straight draw that, that missed. It was pretty sexy, but like, that's kinda like you said, the wave of the future, like, that's something that probably never would have happened a couple of years ago, right? That we could stretch ten lines into a triple barrel bluff, anyways, I thought that was interesting, alright, cool, we'll defend, sorry, I'm battling.
That's cool, let's call, let's do it.
I think that if you fold here, that's never a bad option, you do have a two and an eight, I do think there is. Room for play though here, given our read of the villain, uh, I think call is probably what we should do. He raised the five hundred K, technically, that should work theoretically, you're risking four hundred K to win a. Four hundred, three hundred and fifty K, that, that makes a lot of sense, but I, I find that most guys. These days just have a brain fart and call your three bet, which is a pretty good idea if they could see your hand. Uh, if you said raise all in, that actually does have a lot of merit. Uh, because most likely what he's opening here is four times what he's calling, so it's pretty much any two, you can shove here. But let's call here, uh, let's try to finesse this a little bit, now the board comes ten of clubs, five of clubs, three of diamonds. Would you like to check here? Would you like to bet one hundred and fifty K? Would you like to bet two hundred and twenty-five K, or would you like to bet three hundred K?
Alright.
This is where shit gets weird.
We have absolute fucking napkins on three, five, ten, and he has, he's advocating some kinda lead.
Yeah, well, he's advocating don't lead or check giving up, right? Um, and I think a lot of guys in the chat, since they were all folding, are just gonna check give up here. Um, thinking on a, on a bit of a higher level and, and stuff, I think a donkey here is really interesting, he should never hit this board.
That as well, I just wish it was slightly more connected, man, three, five, seven, three, five, six, three, five, even eight maybe. Um, as well, um, well, obviously, we would have a pair within eight, uh. Yeah, I don't know, man, I think he's gonna wanna lead small, and then use, I think, I think maybe even he's gonna wanna lead small. Like a third pot, and then use cards that connect with the big blinds range. As spots to continue bluffing and give up on high cards, cause we cannot check call. Uh, maybe if he does check back this board, would he? Probably just bet small a lot, we can just turn our hand into a bluff and turn the river if he checks back flop, that's what I would normally do in game. I would probably just check here a lot and then hope he checks.
In game, I think I'm checking here a lot, and if he checks back, then I wanna make a decision, but, uh, I can a hundred percent see the lead here, I kind of agree with you on. The board texture, and I agree with Cyrus in my chat saying, at least if there was a single spade out there, it'd be better, I agree with that too. I got a strong sense that Sossinato's gonna bet like. Buck fifty.
Yeah, it feels like he's just gonna bat and then use and then continue on cards, when the, when he gets called, they're really good for. Either pick up a straight draw or kind of run out the board's favor for the big blind, like, that's all I can see. Bet one fifty, he called, and then if it's a claw, we continue betting, like, small that puts pressure on his stack. And if he calls that, we give up. I'm, I'm trying it, I hate this shit. I'm gonna do something, just add a lot, add a pocket and try it, what do you guys think?
That's what he's gonna do, I think he's gonna bet a buck fifty here and then, same thing on the turn, bet the clubs.
We've been doing this for, we've been doing this for too long, a couple of months now, it feels like my man's betting out here. Cause I mean.
He's another, other way to win. And he puts max pressure on a twelve blind stack, which is now a ten blind stack.
Yeah, and he kinda mentioned a couple points before the hand even started about this player. Looking kinda desperate, looking like he wants to do something here, so, our only play is to bluff, right? Yeah, I mean, but the thing is, he thinks his range is extremely wide here, and I agree, so, this board probably hits us a little bit more. Are we trying to guess what they do, or what we believe is the right play? Um, a little bit of both, like, we, when I'm trying to do the quizzes, I want to score the best, so I'm gonna try to figure out what Alex is doing, but on the other hand. Um, trying to make sure our lines are good in this spot and being honest about what I would do in a spot, which is check.
Yeah, and also, it's about broadening your horizons and looking at different potential lines, and different ways to win pots and, and. I think what's right sometimes can be. I don't know, relative to the player type and the player's style, like, I guess there's different styles that do different things. What Jonathan Little's gonna do is gonna be very different than what Ryan LePlante's gonna do, for, for example, you know? Good, two different styles, right? Or what Jonathan's gonna do is gonna be very different than what Asasina was gonna do, s- you know, similarly, very different styles, so. Alright, I'm gonna go one fifty, and we're gonna go off the rails here.
Oh, he's doing it, what value do you, do you do this lead with? Any top pair? I mean, honestly, I think this is just a very exploitative line, I think, um. He's doing this because he assumes this guy's an amateur, who he, who is just going to overs- fold this spot, not defending enough. Because theoretically, I don't think we're gonna be leading this board, um, so that's why, I would probably check, uh, with no information. But versus an opponent, we might be able to exploit, I think Alex is going to lead. I mean, that's kinda the short of it.
Yeah, I was saying, what value hands do we lead here is a good question. Which is why I don't generally take this board, this, this approach. Because value here is tough. If I had a week ten, I would check. I'd probably just check jam it. Actually, if I had any ten, I would probably check jam it. I wouldn't be here with overpairs. I would have gotten them in pre-flop. If I had sets, I'm probably gonna check jam it.
I would just check raise everything. I'm, I'm in a, I'm in a school of check raising off these stacks now.
Still suspicious of a no all win pre, get out of there. He will of course be a hero real soon, for sure. Alright, I'm gonna go one fifty just cuz I'm feeling assassinati, but I would check fold in game, I think.
I'm gonna check. I'm, I'm gonna do what I would do, and you do that, so we'll start it.
Uh, this is a play I do all the time here. I just go ahead and lead for three hundred K. Uh, if, if this person is opening thirty, forty percent of the hands, you can almost lead any board that doesn't have three cards nine or higher. Obviously, two cards nine or higher, you should be a little bit more careful, but pretty much any other board, uh, you can go after. And I do this constantly, and what I usually get from a guy who's a little over his head and you've never really seen him do anything wild is he opens his hands, like, what am I gonna do? Then he mocks his hand angrily. Uh, and the reason for that is, okay, so, I mean, this is simple communatorics. Uh, you open like thirty, thirty-five percent of the hands, on this board, you will not have a pair sixty, sixty-five percent of the time. Depending on how you range it. Uh, if you're gonna lead here and this guy has no room to raise as a bluff, has no room to really uh, flat you, he's usually just gonna fold those high cards, and if you're betting two-thirds pot, that only needs to work forty percent of the time there, so there's a lot of room for, uh, air there. Now, if you said check for, okay, I'm gonna check raise, I actually like that play a lot too, but I love that against more aggressive players. I've only had one guy figure that out in the past couple of years. It was, uh, uh, deep in a WPT, like, right before a final table, the guy, like, literally took two and a half minutes, three minutes, and then he figured it out, cuz he was good, but most of the time, that does work, cuz they think he would never do that this short, right? Uh, th- the lead versus like very timid opponents that are likely to fold high cards, that's the one I've had the most success with. If you go two twenty-five K, it's a little cutesy. They feel a little dumb folding high cards, so sometimes they call. Same thing with one fifty K, so I just go with the three hundred. And watch him muck.
Ooh, what'd you get for that score?
So we had the idea, we just had to bet it like a man.
Yeah, I had it. I, I, I checked. I ended up checking and got an eight.
Yeah, uh, bet it like a man, force him to have a hand, basically, was the idea there.
What if the button jams there? Just, yeah, that's just, yeah, you have eight high, just done with it.
Yeah, it was basically bet, bet big to force him to have a hand. He could never continue with ace, king, ace, queen, king, queen, any of that.
He should be.
And then just, you know, we snap it with, or we take it down with eight high. And then when he does anything else, we just fold, cuz we have eight high for Christ's sake.
I am never folding ace, queen, or ace, king in that spot if somebody does that. I'm just GG dude.
That's because you are a good player. The guy he, that figured it out was doing it, uh, deep in that WPT, guy thought for like three minutes and then picked him off cuz he was good, so you'd probably do about the same, right?
Yeah, I mean, fuck it. I would, yeah, I mean, at that point, when I get twelve and somebody donk leads into me for there, I was going broke pre-flop, I'm going broke now. Like, that board doesn't, no. Um, let's see, what's next? What looks good? There's a lot of cash game shit coming out, man. Look how many cash game hands there are from seven oh five to seven twenty. Twelve of them.
Uh, I mean, we could, we could dabble in some cash if you want to.
I'm kind of, uh, short on time, so I don't wanna spend too. Cool. I got, I wanna hear, I wanna hear some more Jonathan Little. We need some more Jay Little in our lives. Uh, let's see what we got.
I see six eighty-four.
A two K live event.
That was the first one I see. I see six eighty, same event.
Yeah, let's do that. Hey, Simple Poker Cal. Hey, man, thank you for those biddies. I really appreciate it. Welcome to the stream. Hope you're having a good day. What's up, everyone? Cash! Doctor HJ says, alright, we'll do one cash one, but let's do this two K first.
Six eighty-four?
Yes, sir. Let's do that.
I'm ready.
Oh, shoot.
Amazing queen ten of spades in the small blind facing an early position tight aggressive raise and a low jack call. Should we fold, call, re-raise to nine hundred, or re-raise to eighteen hundred?
Easy peasy. What you guys doing? What you guys doing? Queen ten facing a three X and a call. We are sitting here in the small blind. Who's doing what out there? Let me hear you.
And Swipers just said, uh, how much is thepokercoaching.com? Um, there are, there's a premium membership, there's a basic, and then there's free information. Um, you can check out the link. Um, they will have information on each and what's included, because there's so much that, yeah, I mean, I can't possibly get through all of it. There's a lot of value to each package. There's so much content and so much value, um.
So, yeah, there's a free version where you get, I was corrected. It's twenty quizzes and homeworks and all that jazz. Damn, and I should have, uh, screenshot it when I looked at it last week, or last month, but, or last week, rather, but I believe the middle option is fifty dollars a month, and then the super premium fantastical option is a hundred dollars a month. You can check that out. Uh, Wall's calling, Cyrus' calling, Mendo's calling, To's calling. What are you doing, Cyrus?
Uh, I'm reading chat real quick. Good morning, Cheech. Good to see you. Jam, I, I think I fold, but I'm such a nit and hate playing out of position, not his hand, with three hundred big blinds deep. Uh, we got two-thirds of the royal, man. Right, I mean, not two-thirds. We got, uh, two fifths of the royal in our hand, so, yeah, I'm just calling here. This deep, um.
Yeah, I just called these suited pains this deep, for sure, myself.
Yeah, like, trying to three-bet this and playing it out of position in a situation where we're likely gonna be lo- multi-way. Uh, we could potentially be playing multi-way with the hand that could be dominated by better queen X and ten X. Um, yeah, I, I really like just calling here.
Yeah, I've called streaming to my chat. Cyrus, Wall, Bruce, Pete, Chad, Revote, Sheena, Joe, all call.
Yeah, just think about it. You can't, like, I think in this spot with such a high value hand, like, so what if you lose two hundred, two hundred and fifty chips right now to see a flop? Like, it, it's not gonna affect your playability. You're not gonna make a massive mistake. I believe in you. I know, I know, you can do it.
I believe in you.
I believe in you. You will not punch your whole stack if you just hit top pair. I, I don't think you're gonna pump three hundred. Alright, let's do it. I'm calling.
This seems like a fantastic spot to call. If I am going to re-raise, you definitely wanna make it pretty large, like eighteen hundred. I don't actually mind three-betting this type of hand from out of position. If this was offsuit and I wanted to play it, I would three-bet it. Which means that, you know, this hand's kind of on the cusp of playability. Maybe like queen nine suited would be okay to three-bet. Really, I think I'm just three-betting mostly the big offsuit cards at this point, though, like king, jack, queen, jack. Maybe probably not jack ten, probably not queen ten, so, something like that. Anyway, the big suited cards are just fine to call with, so I like calling. We're gonna be checking every flop from the small blind. It goes check, check, check. Turn gives us two pair, but this is almost the worst two pair you could possibly have. Should we check, bet three hundred, bet six hundred, or bet nine hundred?
Alrighty then.
We had two pair, wah, wah. Check's already streaming in my chat.
Yeah, what are you guys doing? Anybody leading out here only to check the river?
Joyce says he needs to work on his three-betting range. It, it's gonna vary on, uh, stack sizes a little bit.
I kind of wanted to talk about that a little bit as well, because he was saying, you know, I don't know. It feels like a when we're this deep and we're three-betting offsuit shit, we're likely to get called way more often when we're this deep, so I don't know, man. Well, no, I mean, to late position and things like that. I just, I just feel like in some situations, even using something like this as a three-bet, um, in position, it's just gonna play a little bit better than offsuit shit, when you're gonna be calling a lot, so, yeah.
I tend to three-bet the offsuit stuff because I don't give a shit if I get four-bet, I can just fold it, and then when I three-bet this and get four-bet, I'm like, man, I really wanted to see a flop with this pretty queen ten, you know?
Right.
Uh, Bruce, what happened to the flop? It checked around.
So with two tags, we are either bet folding or check call reevaluating. Okay, I see. You're thinking, you're thinking right GTO. I like it. BQ says three hundred, let's see where we are. And then Doctor HJ says easy check, so we got a couple different lines. Some people just wanna see if we're, we're betting for value now, um. Yeah, I mean, I personally, I'd like to check call, but.
Me too. Um, betting three hundred to see where we are, the problem with that is when we get called, we still don't know where we are. Is it a better two pair? Is it a king? Or sets out there? We don't know. We don't get any information.
Yeah, we don't know if it's ace nine or something like that. We just don't know. Um, so, yeah, by, by just checking and then reevaluating, because what can happen here is we can check, right? This player under the gun plus one bets pretty big, and the low jack can raise, or, you know, so we get to just kind of evaluate and see what happens. So, I, I, yeah, I would wanna check here and see what, how they proceed with bet sizes and whatnot, and we have a marginal we have a marginal strength hand here, like, we don't, we're not necessarily betting for value. Marginal made hand.
Don't get blinded by the light.
Yep, marginal made hand, so let's do it.
So, this is a pretty bad two pair. We have a very obvious marginal made hand or a junk hand, depending on how the action goes down. And it's probably just a junk hand, so we're gonna check. I don't think we need to bluff this. We can't really get called by many worse hands, right? I mean, if our opponents have like ace nine, they're probably just gonna fold, because it's so easy for us to have a king. If you wanna develop a bluffing range in this spot, I'm trying to think what you even wanna do, but I don't even know if you need many bluffs. Like, there may be no, no bluffing range if you were to run this through a GTO solver. Just because it's so easy for one of the opponents to have a king, and if they don't have a king, they have to be quite cautious when it comes to bluffing, because I could easily have a king. So this is a spot where I'm probably just supposed to do a whole lot of checking with everything. Because if I bet with a king here, it's hard to get called by worse, right? And if our opponents do have outs, it's probably not very many outs, so I don't really mind giving them the chance to bluff or letting them see the river, because they're nearly dead anyway when I have a king. So I bet we're just supposed to check everything. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna check. Check, check to the tight aggressive player, and the low jack seat who bets five fifty, half pot. Should we fold, call, raise to fifteen hundred, or raise to twenty-seven hundred?
Alright, boys, what we doing here? Anybody getting nasty in check raising?
Ooh, snap.
Whoa, a lot of, a few folds streaming in, yikes. Raising is suicide. Yeah, that's because the dude in the backseat who's gonna turn enough hands into a bluff when people check to him, he just has it every time, right? Course he does.
I mean, we're just in one of those spots where our hands too good to raise, or too bad to raise, too good to fold.
I think it'd be a little bit different if plus one decided to raise. Um, then he's gotta worry about the low jack potentially having a king in his range, uh, but the player in the backseat, yeah. I just say it would be, I think it would be indicative of maybe a little bit stronger, but the player in the backseat can have a reasonable amount of stabs in this spot. So we're gonna keep it honest. We're pretty deep. Um, yeah, I think we can call.
Me too. Me too.
Uh, call as we still have implied odds to get paid from. Yeah, we can, we can certainly develop here as well, you know, um, we still. Yep, we think if he's bluffing, he's betting much bigger, um. I don't know about that. He may just, he may just be one of these guys who just thinks this is big enough. He's just going half pot.
People just blindly bet half pot. We talked about that earlier.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think I'd just like a call here. I like the call, to be honest. Brandon says, good morning, Casper. Good to see you, buddy. Welcome, welcome, man.
Cyrus' calling, Joe's calling. That's all I got in my chat. Everyone else too scared to answer.
Haha, let's do it. Alright, we're calling.
We definitely don't wanna have much of a raising range, because it's so easy for the loose aggressive player just to have a king. So, we're either calling or we're folding. In general, I think this is gonna be a fold. And that's just because it's so easy for the guy to have a king, and if he is, you know, call it bluffing, it's often gonna be with something like an ace that has, you know, some number of outs to improve, cuz if he gets an ace or a jack or a king or whatever his kicker is, he wins. So, I don't think there's any point in sticking around, unless you get the vibe that your opponent is weak. Now, that will happen in live poker every once in a while. This is a two thousand dollar buy-in live event. So, I, I don't think calling would be insane if you thought your opponent was a little bit out of line, but given I have him labeled as a tight aggressive player in general, we should probably just fold. I do call this time, though, and I can pretty much tell you that that is because I have some sort of a read. And it's probably just like, I thought this guy was weak. You know, that happens every once in a while where I just get the vibe that the opponent is weak, and if I think the opponent's weak, I am not afraid to risk my money. If you think your reads are generally somewhat accurate, you should not be afraid to risk your money on them, and if they actually are accurate, you will make money in the long run. This time, it went check, check on the river, and I won the pot. Now, you may say, if our opponent bet the river, what do we do? Well, it depends, right? If our opponent is the type of player who may just keep blasting, then we should probably go ahead and call again. Kind of surprised the opponent did not bet again some portion of the time, um. Maybe just had like some weird hand, like pocket nines, and decided to bluff it. It's, it's kind of hard to come up with very many obvious bluffs, right? Maybe he had jack nine, ten nine, something like that. I don't even know. And, uh, this actually shows you why yeah, uh, maybe it doesn't necessarily illustrate this. Like, if our opponent bet the river, it would be great for us to have some kings in our range, right? Which is why we don't wanna raise the kings. Um, because our opponent will be bluffing sometimes, and, you know, they, he decided not to follow through this time on the river, but they will sometimes, and that's why it's important to make sure your calling range is decently well protected. And, um, so, yeah, this is a spot where I think if he bets again, we're probably just going to fold. But that's because I know I'm structuring my range, since I have some turn calls that can fold the river, like queen ten, as well as some kings on the river that can easily not fold. They, they will always call or raise on the river.
Alright, I'm back. These quizzes are fun. Shriver says, yeah, man, they're a good time. I think I learned something every single week. Um, it's, I enjoy kicking it with my boy To and you guys, so the issue is awesome, man. Good times.
Yeah, I enjoy doing these a lot. Um, feels good just to get back. I enjoy studying poker, um, so it feels, for me, it just feels good to get back in in the, in the driver's seat doing this again.
I thought you were getting burned out for a minute. I thought I was burning out the group.
Kidding me? I'm obsessed. I'm blessed to be obsessed.
Me too, buddy. Alright, let's do a cash one. It's time, boys. It's a one-two no limit. One-two cash for pocket nine, super deep Jonathan. This is what it's about. Pocket, uh, number seven twelve. I think this is, for some reason, this is calling my name.
Got it.
Alright, boys, we're about to do some cash games. I am not an expert at cash, but let's do it.
Here we have pocket nines playing pretty deep in one-two no limit facing a seven dollar raise and a three bet from a decent player in the cutoff. Should we fold, call, re-raise to sixty-six, or re-raise to eighty-two?
We're playing one-two. Alright, what are you guys thinking? Shriver's just cracking up. Uh, laughing.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm no cash game expert either, which is kind of funny, uh, but, uh, I mean, I know what I'm doing in this spot in general.
Yeah, let's see what everyone else says. BQ says fold. Twenty-two doll hairs.
Is that seven a straddle? No, it was an open to seven and then a three bet to twenty-two, Joe. Machine Gun says six-six all day. He's like, you can't ding him if he goes six-six.
No, I can't. The machine gun's always gonna, he's just gonna do his thing, you know? Come on, chat, what are we doing here?
Joe's calling.
Shriver's is calling. I feel you. Call with a question mark?
Cyrus's calling.
Do we? Out of position, we are probably dominated. We don't know that. We're not dominating if he has ace, king. We're not dominating if he's doing this with eights or he's just aggro, it's fucked.
Pete's calling.
Eight-handed? Alright, cool. Fuck it, I'm calling.
We're getting set mining odds, if nothing else, and I think our hand is good here a lot sometimes too, like you said. I mean, he could have ace, king, ace, queen, something like that as well.
Cash, yeah. He's not, people aren't gonna, good players are not going to be flating this spot too much in the cutoff. They're gonna use a lot of different hands as three bets. Um, hands they wanna play mostly are gonna be used for three bets.
In terms of going the Marlin route, um, four bet four, the problem with that, in my opinion, is like, we four bet this to sixty-six, get a caller, comes down. Get a caller, comes down, queen, blank, blank, we see bet, we get called, king on the turn comes, we now. Have to use that as a bluff card, and we have three hundred bucks in this damn. You know what I mean, pot, and we could just call for twenty-two and have the right odds and. Go that route instead, so I tend to like not blow the pot with a hand like this.
Yeah, it'd be awesome to hit a set three-way when everybody's got two hundred and fifty big blinds or two hundred big blinds deep, that would be fucking awesome.
Brooks didn't agree with me, he just said that to get me to fucking go off and uh, give my explanation.
Alright, I'm calling here, let's, I mean, another thing is, when we raise sixty-six or eighty-two, are we using this as a bluff? Like, because we're not blocking anything, and if we get jammed on, we only have nines, just not blocking. Any of the top of its range, the playability and visibility. It's gonna be a little poor out of position. Um, so yeah, I'm just gonna be calling.
Pete's a good see, I see good players flat too, and yeah, I mean, good players are gonna have all options in their game, right? They're gonna have balanced check ranges. They're gonna have some three bets, some likely bets, some strong three bets, they're gonna have flats, they're gonna have all that stuff.
Yep, alright, let's call.
This is. A little bit different than one of my previous quizzes where we were facing under the gun raise and second position three bets. Now we're facing under the gun raise and then decent cutoff three bets, and. Now we're much deeper, two hundred fifty big blinds and deep, so I think in this scenario, we can justify calling. And you know, we're not a hundred percent set mining, but we, we kind of are set mining here. Um, if we get a very favorable flop, we can stick around a little bit, but. This is a spot where you definitely need to be cautious, if you said fold, I don't think it's like incredibly nitty. I mean, i- it's pretty nitty, but I I definitely think that this hand is good enough to stick around. If I had eights, I'm probably calling two, sevens, I'm probably gonna start folding. As your pair gets lower and lower, you're just gonna be set over set a little bit more often, so you'd rather not have that happen for two hundred fifty big blinds. But this is a spot where I think it's okay to call and go from there, I don't really think you need to re-raise. Re-raising could be fine, if you think it's gonna give you a ton of bold equity or get you a ton of very accurate information, but. Three betting is rough, because when you do get called, you don't really know where you stand, and your hand doesn't play particularly well post-flop unless you make a set. So, I think I like calling, if we were shallower though, I would fold, if we had a hundred big blinds, I would fold, a hundred fifty big blinds, I'd probably fold. Maybe two hundred big blinds is where we start calling in this scenario. We do see a ten-seven-six flop, checks around to the cutoff, who bets fifty dollars into the sixty-eight dollar pot. Should we fold? Call. Raise to a hundred or raise to a hundred seventy-five?
Alright, what are we doing, boys? Anybody raising semi-bluffing? I don't wanna jump the gun yet, I just wanna see what everyone else is doing.
Joe call, Travis will call with second pair.
Probably calling, but I can see one seventy-five, call, can't fold, and I don't like raising. Calls. Yeah, I mean. Seeing a lot of calls. Make it one hundred, so we're gonna click back the nine tier, you're that guy that does this shit to me, huh, BK? You're this guy that's like, what the fuck can he possibly have?
Click back here, bet turn. I mean, the thing is, if you click back here and then check turn, it's probably a mistake, so. Think if you could do, take the click back way, you have to bet turn, if that's the choice that you.
Maybe I do like, nah, I mean, we don't like, okay, okay, let's think about this. He's betting into a board that hits kind of a lot, we're gonna have a lot of tens, sevens, sixes. You know, ten X hands in our range, and he's still willing to see bet into this board fairly big, fifty into sixty-eight? No, fifty into one eighteen. Right? That's a hundred, fifty-nine big blind, so fifty into one eighteen. Um, yeah, he's still see betting here, I just don't know if someone's gonna use ace queen off as a see bet into this texture. So I'm gonna think he's still got some pretty strong hands, and we can't like discount. When under the gun plus one having set, sometimes he checks or nut flush draws and things like that, so I probably just like.
Decent player too, he shouldn't be betting a flop this wet. With some bullshit.
Yeah, that's how, that's kinda how I feel, I mean, we have a lot of equity, uh, with the gut shot as well, um. So we got six outs twice, they can make us the best hand, we have a heart as well, blocking some flush draws, we still have to worry about under the gun plus one. Having some kinda set or something like that, and I don't wanna turn this into a bluff, we beat enough of his hands, so I'm calling.
Machine gun says can't call here and allow him to see another card, it's raised for short to one seventy-five. Um, my discreet, I think when we raise here, better's calling, worse is folding, um, and so, I'm just calling here.
Yeah.
Pete says call, cause Nate's coming on the turn, that's cause he's a team toe guy, and that's how we run.
Toe equity. Yep, I feel it, ace a heart, check, X bat, what is, what are you saying? Ace eight, alright, maybe he has some ten X if he has a wide three betting range, yeah, he has some ten X, he has, still has overpair. Certainly still has aces, kings, queens, he hasn't capped his range by, you know, checking, so he can still have some very strong hands here, we should be concerned about. So yeah, I mean, I think I'm just calling here, I don't see another option, to be honest, folding feels too tight.
Yep.
Um, so yeah, let's just call. Yeah, what it, what, okay, if you watch enough Jonathan quizzes, you're gonna learn today, marginal, what does he say, marginal? Yeah, marginal made hands, and that's what this is, and we still have some equity, so we don't raise marginal made hand.
Yep. Pump the shit up, because you have shit, have no shutout value, pump the value up, because you wanna get value and everything in the middle. We start playing a more pot-controll-y type of deal.
Yep, we've done enough of these quizzes already to know that we're just calling here. Alright.
This is one of those flops where I think we just have to stick around, obviously, if you can look at the, under the gun plus one player and tell that they really like their hand. We could certainly just. Fold, right? Cause they may raise or call with a hand that just has us crushed. Uh, the problem here is we have a gut shot and we have a backdoor flush draw, I realize the backdoor flush draw is not a particularly good one, but the gut shot is really live. And you have to kind of assume the cutoff doesn't have too many eights in their range, so in this scenario. We have six outs to a pretty great hand, now we're not gonna get there all that often on the turn, maybe twelve percent of the time or so. But, we also just have the best hand sometimes, if the cutoff is betting here with ace king, ace queen, queen jack. Pocket twos, they randomly decided to bluff, right? I mean. We very easily could have the best hand, and our opponent has to be somewhat cautious when it comes to blasting us on the turn. Because we could also just have lots of draws that will sometimes get there, and we could have some sets, that may like to just call, although if I had a set, I'd probably raise the flop. Anyway, I called. Tag folds, turns to two, I check. And the opponent checks behind, so. Now. If the opponent bet the turn, I probably would fold. Um, that said, it's, it's a tough spot, because if the opponent's decent, he will just continue bluffing with some bluffs, like king queen is a pretty fine hand to continue bluffing. Just because you have no showdown value and you have some outs if you happen to be behind. But the opponent's gonna be checking here a lot with stuff like ace king, ace queen, ace jack, et cetera. Just looking to give up most likely, so if I faced a bet on the turn, we could get bluffed out some portion of the time, and I think it's fine to fold. But when it goes check, check, we're, we're reasonably happy, that said, if the opponent's good, they could just be checking back over pair sometimes, just to. Make me think my hand is good to try to get a river value bet in. So it goes check, check on the turn, river is the four of clubs. Should we check? Bet fifty? Bet one twenty-five? Or bet two fifty?
Alrighty then.
So this is where the hand gets a little more. Interesting for me in that. Do we try and get thin value, cause he never checks back super strength of the turn?
I know, you're, you're always conflicted in these spots, man.
Tough spot for me, yeah, like I, I half feel that I should be betting.
Minus the bear, I'm sorry, man, the volume is maxed out, I apologize.
Yeah, mine too, these are just.
Yeah, some of these quizzes are kind of.
I'm gonna put a feature request with just GTO. See if we can't get that somehow fixed.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, just have, uh, all the coaches work on audio settings and have them louder before they record or something.
I'll do a little test too, like when the stream is done, I'll play the same quiz back and see if it's low. Uh, when I play it without Skype, without the Skype call, um, and if that's the case, then it's just, just the way it is, there's nothing we can really do. Um, check call says Cyrus, checks the turn, it's good, God help them, bombs away. Marlin and Bruce going one twenty-five into one sixty-eight. Uh, my problem is with the one twenty-five is that I'm trying to get thin value, right?
I think I wanna bet, like, let's think about this, so from our perspective here, if he did have some kind of pair or something like that, he could. Uh, theoretically, still have overpair and whatnot, but what does it look like when we have, we have, when we check back turn? And then we turn, it looks like we can be turning our hand into a bluff with the num- number of combos, right?
Sure.
Uh, number of flush draws, maybe, um, straight draws, uh, some of that shit got there, eight-nine was already got there. Is he ever gonna call with worse, with worse hands, would he call with?
That's funny, cause Marlon said he might even overbet here, then that was gonna be my question for him, is what worse is calling when you overbet here, Marlon?
What worse hands would call an overbet to check back turn?
None.
Eight-seven? Pocket eights?
Hard for them to hero when you overbet.
Yeah, what do, I mean, what's our target range, is he gonna three, is he gonna three bet like eight-seven, eight-six? I could see a three bet with the eights. Is he ever gonna just bluff this river because he has king high? You know?
Joe's going fifty, I'm kinda conflicted.
Dr. HJ. Just get him to bluff, yeah, I mean, for some reason, I feel like we wanna check here. We get some bluffs, I could just cannot picture enough worse hands that can call this, man.
Pocket eights to seven.
I mean, yeah, you're like, you're fishing, yeah, you're, you're like fishing for those, and then everything else. It's probably just gonna fold, so he's gonna have more bluffs in his, he can't call. And our check back range is pretty well protected here for an easy check, e- easy bluff catch. Ah, man, I don't know, fuck. Part of me really wants to go fifty. He could stab in position ace four, ace four did get there, yeah, I can see that. He's not calling a bet with ace high versus our three-bet flattening range, I can see that.
Great.
Yeah. Alright, I'm checking, I've talked myself into it, I don't know what else to do, I ca- I mean, I don't know, if I'm gonna bet, I'm gonna bet small. Um, to maybe eke out some value from some of the under pairs. Um, but outside of that, yeah, I think we just.
Just says like seventy better, which I kinda like too, and he says, first he had a ten with kick problems, he could.
Is he gonna turn his hand into a block enough versus us?
Right. I don't think he is, I think he checks back at the time.
I'm kinda with you, I'm so close, I'm so torn between checking back fifty, it's insane, I don't know what to do, between these two. I don't know if any of the larger bets make a lot of sense unless. We're really trying to polarize our range and make it look like we have a misdraw and hope he heroes off with some of those same combos.
He shouldn't have jacks plus, right? We can take those out, he shouldn't have sets, we can take those.
Uh, he said we can, he said, we, I don't know if we can necessarily take them out, he did mention. That a good player here will check back overpair on the turn to get us to think some of these type of hands are good. Or so he can just eke out a bigger shoot of value on the river, because a lot of times, it's probably gonna be hard to go one, two, three on this board. And get called by a lot worse, I don't know. Maybe not, but he just thought a decent player here would check overpair some percentage of the time. Alright, chat, uh, I am going to Midas, where do we do it, man? I'm gonna go with whatever you say, it's time to go to the chat. You want me to check or do you wanna bet? Dr. HJ is betting, XBBT is betting. If we check in the cutoff bets, what do we do then? Bluff catch.
Snap call. Cause he checked.
Bluff catch, huh, we just have a bluff catcher, unless he goes insanely big somehow. Alright, I am going to bluff catch, I don't know, it just comes to mind, let's do it.
I'm gonna go thin value just for shits and giggles, but I would probably be a wimp and check this. I'm gonna go fifty.
Oh, you're doing, we, it's usually the opposite between us, I would be betting this.
Win game, I'm a hundred percent checking, but I feel like I should learn.
You're gonna learn today, alright, I'm bet, I'm cha- I'm checking. Let's do it.
Going to value bet the river, we wanna be betting small, because we're trying to get called by some pretty weak hands, like ace high or. I have no random eight-seven type hand, but I really don't think there's a whole lot of Meriden betting, I mean, one reason to consider betting. Is because if we bet, maybe our opponent just doesn't blast it, cause we really don't wanna check and have our opponent make a sizable bet, because then. We're probably supposed to fold. Yeah. If we face a big bet, we're probably supposed to fold, so this is a pretty tough spot where I definitely see the Meriden betting small, but I think in general, most people, especially at one-two no limit, who are. You know, reasonable players, are just gonna check behind with their ace king, they're not gonna bluff it. And I do think we're gonna be against random overcards a lot of the time, that will just give up, as your opponents get more loose and aggressive. You should be a little bit more inclined to check and then call it, because. The draw is missed, and clearly, if the opponent has no showdown value or a little showdown value, they'll consider bluffing. But I think in most one-two games, it's fine to just check and then fold to a bet. So, let's go check, check. And this time I win.
Oh. We beat Nas today on the quizzes, boys.
So this stuck with, well, I always do.
Uh, yeah, I know, I got a, we got a perfect score there, it's all ten, it's so pretty, bang, bang. Alright, I got time for, uh, one more before, oh shit. I think, I think I got time for one more, let's do one more.
Okay, you sure?
No, but it's okay, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm probably gonna get destroyed, I don't have my phone near me, I missed probably ten calls by now, but it's alright. It's a kid's birthday party, bro, I don't. Uh, it's so painful.
What, you do like pin the tail of a donkey, what's wrong with you? Pinatas and. You know, all that good stuff.
Bunch of bad foods and loud ass kids, but it's a good time, I can.
My kids are grown, I'm, we don't, we don't have that anymore. What do you wanna play?
Alright, uh, I got time for one more. Yeah, just go ahead and pick, I picked the last one.
Uh, six ninety-six.
Six-nine-six. Three point five K queen jack suited, two hundred bigs, weak, very weak station in the cutoff, let's do it.
Alright, today we start looking at some hands from the thirty-five hundred dollar WPT Choctaw Main Event. This first hand, we have queen jack of diamonds in the small blind. Cut-off's gonna raise it to a thousand, this player had been limping a lot, was playing a lot of hands and did not like to fold, ever, so. Strong player calling the button. We're in the small blind, should we fold? Call, re-raise to three thousand or re-raise to forty-five hundred?
We got a fish in there, boys, what are we doing? We got a strong player behind, just calling, do we wanna get heads up with the fish? What do we like?
So my volume is here, it's gonna blast a lot, uh. Matt the Net will call, says Cyrus.
Why you gotta go there, man? Why you gotta, why you gotta call my man out? He's a beast, dude.
ACR is down, that sucks, Ocean.
Damn, it's been a minute.
It has been a minute since they've gone down.
Uh, call two hundred big blinds, maybe four point five K, he said. He's been limping a lot and he makes it five X, he's just playing his hand, he's up, he has a monster, we just call. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we wanna get in the business of fucking making this shit like, what is it? Yeah, I mean, I, I just don't think we wanna be in the business of making it too, too big out of position versus an opponent who's been limping and now five Xing. So I kinda like all.
Five K or something, yeah. Uh, Nashville Lynn says he's going to three K though, Joe's going three K, uh.
Damn, Toe Army's out there, aggressive as hell, okay.
Angry, we're angry today.
Angry, shit, come on, guys, chill. Alright, yeah, I'm calling, ooh, Drizzle says three K as well.
Do you ever like watch yourself on stream and think like, goddamn, I need a haircut? You don't realize until you see.
Fuck, yeah, I've done that.
Shit, I gotta shave.
Yeah, just, I'm like, man, I look rough today, I'm looking rough, I definitely, looking, looking tired, long in the tooth.
Anyways, uh, uh, yeah, cool, go, ready, go.
Alright, let's call, fuck that fold, whoa, damn, to the river, stop it, he's a, he's a weak fish, we wanna play pots versus the fish? Two hundred big blinds deep, stop.
The hand that flops so well, right?
Yep, let's call.
Really close spot pre-flop here, there's no annies yet, um, I don't like squeezing, um, because. Of this player not wanting to ever fold, and I just don't feel comfortable putting a lot of money in out of position. Plus, we have a really strong player on the button, he can have a wider range, cause he's trying to play a pot in position with this guy, but this is a five X bet, out of position. Multiway, so now, like, our diamonds aren't gonna be as good as often, we don't have as much equity, so. Folding is not the worst option here, and I think a lot of people are gonna call, I think calling is the best option, but folding is definitely a. Really good option here in the small blind, you're gonna get in a lot of trouble here three ways out of position. Um, we did call only because of how bad this player was, if this guy wasn't as bad as he was, then I think folding is the best option. Um, especially because like, he's been limping so much, he has. Um, especially cuz like he's been limping so much. He has has a stronger range when he raises now. Anyways, we go three ways. Comes king, four deuce, two diamonds, easy check. We're never gonna ra- lead into the player. Always gonna be checking. And he bets two thousand and the strong player calls. Should we fold? Call, re-raise to six thousand or re-raise to eight thousand?
Alright, boys, what are we doing here? We flopped. We wanted a flush draw. We're blocking some king, queen, king, jack, but we're still getting a lot of action. We're out of position. What do you like? Call that shit. To the river says, I threw in the shit, but that's cool.
Cyrus is calling. Nash villain is calling.
My man didn't realize that shit was five X pre. Yeah, definitely definitely changes everything. And like he said, man, if you're not comfortable in some of these spots. You know, um, and you feel like you're gonna make mistakes and you don't know how to proceed, it's not a mistake to fold. You know, this is not a and the ma- only because this cat is really bad is what he said, and I get it. Uh, backdoor, straight and flush draw. We're just calling. And Doctor HJ says call. You said check, but I know what you mean. You meant call. Yeah, let's just call. Snap it in.
Call, 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 call. Marlon says walk the dog. Cyrus says, what do you do if the dog shits on your shoe?
Fucking burn the shoe.
Burn the shoe.
Kick out the dog. Yeah.
Alright, let's call.
Alright, let's do it.
Pretty easy decision here. I think we have a clear call. We're never folding. Um. Re-raising has some merits because we have some backdoor straight potentials, but this very weak player is betting like. Sixty percent pot in the two players. I don't expect him to fold very much. I think he has a pretty strong range here and I just don't wanna. Barrow myself off into a huge pot against a player. I don't know if he's gonna fold. And so um I think we just play our hand pretty straightforward here and call. I'm worried about the strong player. I don't think he has a really strong hand. But he can have some hands that really put us in a bad spot. Nine of clubs, easy check again. And now this player bets five thousand. The button folds. It's on us. Should we fold? Call, re-raise to fifteen thousand or go all in?
It is, it is. And one quick thing to someone brought up. Someone says, what is the button calling with? The button is a problem for us. Um, yeah, like the button can certainly have a king X when he calls on the flop. Uh, likely he can just be set mining and then still have some pairs. Under, yeah, he could just have under pairs of the king. He just wanted to continue with with the diamond in there and diamond in their hand. Uh, ace five with the ace of diamonds or something like that. I don't know if he's calling ace five offsuit. Um, but yeah, he can just like have ace jack with the ace of diamonds or something like that. He wanted to see one with. Um, in some under pairs, but yeah. What do you guys like here?
It's also scary that somebody who's a calling station is betting. That always kinda worries me once and he's betting on the two people chatter book, so. Going to fifteen K, I think is probably a mistake for that reason.
Tap your stack.
Interesting to nine specifically cuz we picked up more outs. Um, even Marlin is just calling chatter book, so that should.
If the machine gun is just calling. Yeah.
Uh, Nashville says call as a weak player and straight. Yep, yep, yep. Got shot in the flush. Yep, 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 yep. Call, 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 call.
Pot control calling to the sea, the river. I would grunt call. Uh, you don't wanna give away anything, but yeah, we just gotta call.
Also, when this guy's betting pre and then betting into two players and then betting into two players on the turn, it doesn't look like we have fold equity and when we. Raise here or jam here, part of it is that we wanna have fold equity so we can win the pot by taking it down now. And then part of it is that when we do get called, we have good equity against the calling range and chances to win. So two ways to win that way. Um, my argument here is when he does this, we probably don't have the fold equity part, which is why I'm just calling.
I mean, we do versus some hands that he might, but I mean, I I just don't feel like.
Less likely when he bets twice in the two people.
Yeah, it ranges strong as hell. He goes five X pre, C bets big, double barrels, king high board, two players. Like, just keep telling yourself that story and you're gonna hate a raise more and more at that point.
Yep.
Um, so pick up equity. Now we have a gut shot and a flush draw, all of which make us the best hand. And this guy might spew off his entire stack, so uh it's just a snap call.
Yep.
Yeah.
Not liking this situation that much. He's betting five thousand again, so he's just kinda blasting away at this pot. Um, we have three clean outs to straight and nine to a flush or twelve. We have about twenty-four percent equity. We'll say twenty-five percent. So we need to be getting three to one, which we're almost getting the right price to call anyways. Plus, I can say station. We will almost always get paid off by like his ace, king or aces or pocket fours, deuces, kings, whatever he has. I don't think he's ever gonna fold. But we do have some reverse implied odds too, so. Um, I like calling the most. I do not like re-raising to fifteen thousand because we raised to fifteen thousand and then this player shoves. We're just in a really terrible spot. So uh I like going all in better than re-raising to fifteen thousand, but I think calling is the clear option. And the river is the ten of spades. Should we check? Bet twelve thousand, bet twenty-five thousand or go all in?
Whoa. The nut fucking river, not a diamond. Oh, my god.
Wayder and weirder.
Alright, here we go. So there's nineteen K out there. Um, XBBT says all in. You also block hands and you want him to fold a raise with? Agreed, Schreiber's. We want him to have flush draws in his range if we're gonna pull off a semi bluff, so I don't know.
And then even things like queen ten and king ten. I'm sorry, jack ten. We blocked those as well, right?
So this is interesting. I am seeing a ton of leads here. I went. To bet, he will call two thirds pot twenty-five K. He's calling everything he has. Twelve K. Damn, everybody is. I haven't seen one yet.
Uh, I have bink all in on the river. Check from chat revoked. Bet twelve. He jumps over all in. Twelve K all in. Bet the nuts. Uh, but I can get behind the check as well. Um, I mean.
I know what I'm doing here.
I would. Tend to check this, I think. Only because he bet twice, I'm expecting him to bet again and then I can jam.
So yeah, here's the thing. I don't think uh if he's of every week station, this guy's probably going to overvalue his. You know, king, queens, even though we block is, you know, the all the very, so we get value. He bets all the strongest hands he would bet anyway. And now he has bluffs. When we lead into him for fucking twenty-five K. Sure, that same range of hands that's going to call you, um, is probably gonna bet anyway, so that gives us an opportunity to check raise, right? Yeah, so if he makes a bet, we can just check raise. So and whatever we bet he's gonna call with anyway. So yeah, I'm just gonna check raise here.
Yeah, I'm feeling like a check raise here too. I'm still betting the nuts. I'm just betting it after he.
After, yeah.
When I know he's gonna triple a lot because he bet into two people twice. And he opened a really big pre, right? He should have ace king here a time.
And I guess I guess there's a time when a a guy like this may feel compelled to just keep bluffing as well. Um, and we just lose a very small percentage of the times he keeps bluffing by betting out. And I think we make the max when we can check raise. We make the ma- by, I mean, we we can win twenty-five K, but we might be costing ourselves seventeen. I don't know. Alright, let's see what chat is saying. This shit is getting kinda crazy. Will the weak station actually blast off on this river if we check? Yes, I mean, he's backed twice into two people. Nothing's changed. Um, the diamond jaws missed. I think he's gonna even feel more comfortable. Betting uh his ace kings and shit for value, so I think a weak player here will overvalue some hands and just go with aces in one pair. Nah, if he's weak, he will check back, but he will call to a big bet is the problem figuring out how large of a bet he would call. Understandable. Yeah, how do we know how much to bet here? Ace ten checks back, but would ace ten even call like twenty-five K on the river? We don't know that.
I'm not twenty-five. But might call the twelve.
Yeah, I mean, I think I used to might call the. I mean, I guess if we're polarizing, he just can just get sticky with the ten X and a king X as well. Some of those hands never fold, but I think some of it, he still has a bet call range, right?
King ten is betting indeed, but I think king, queen, king, ace, king is betting too and.
Are we just wrong? Everybody wants to bet out here, man. Dog bet time price with somebody, dude. He's betting out. He didn't say a size, but he's betting. Always bet the nuts.
I'm just waiting for him to bet first and then I'm gonna raise him.
I think this, I I don't know, just leading out in this spot.
Had I check raised flop. Turned and a definitely betting the river, but I don't have the initiative here and this guy bet twice in the two people. I'm just. I'm expecting him to bet the river a ton.
What if we just overbet jammed into him when the diamonds missed? That same hand. Uh, alright, let's check raise. Let's do it. I don't know. Ah, fuck, man.
I'm kinda with you on it.
Alright, let's try it.
You like the overbet? Gin card on the river, ten of spades. We make the nuts. Um. Against like a strong player, I would always check here and let them continue to bluff. But against this weak call and station, I just don't think we give him a chance to check behind a hand like ace king here, which he's never gonna fold to a bet. So I like betting and I like betting large. Um, either twenty-five thousand or going all in. Standard would be going all in, but some players, it kinda depends on the opponent. Some players like they perceive all ins is a lot stronger. Some players perceive all ins is much bluffier. So it kinda depends on the player, uh, whether twenty-five thousand or all in. I went with twenty-five thousand, so a little over pot. Um, and the player called and showed king, ten of diamonds, so we rivered the uh three outer for the nuts. And that's kind of why these multi-way spots, non-not flush draws become very, very devalued because it's very likely that one player has a higher flush draw. So, um, like on the turn when the guy bet five thousand, if this strong player had called on the button, I might even fold my hand. Because even though I'm getting the right price, cuz it's very likely that one of them has like the king high of this hand or like the nut flush draw, so. Uh, but yeah, we got very lucky.
We cost ourselves seven K. I don't agree. I don't know. I don't agree with this. I don't know what else to say. And do I to to get a two on top of that, man, I'm a. Me and me and Matt go have some words when I see him. Nah, I'm kidding. I'm I'm joking. Yeah, tomorrow. Yeah, I'm just gonna steal on that when I see him like. I don't agree either.
Uh, sorry, I was meeting on my stream. I was saying, uh, I agree with sixes and not, uh, don't agree with Matt on this one. And I was saying that when he bet twice, he screams king and I argued that was a very weak station. And so I think a very weak station is still going to bet. Um, the ace king on the river, even though he thought he was checking back. I think the weak station overvalues ace king and king queen for that matter. Um, and then king ten, obviously, we just give him stack.
Yeah, I mean, who knows? A weak station might just rip this river like ah. It just feels like everything he does that with.
I mean, rip or not, he's gonna bet. We're gonna jam. He's never.
Cuz we're blocking hands like king, queen and king, jack. Some of the single pair candidates that are probably checking back, right? So that leaves him with a lot of ace, king, top, uh, aces, um. Just strong two pair. I don't know.
I think hands like king, jack and potentially king, queen are checking back, but I don't think ace, king is checking.
No, no, I think.
Value from worse hands, right?
Yeah, we're blocking some of that, so fuck, man. Oh, well. I just hate getting a two on that river cuz I don't think checking is a fucking two, so that so pretty much. He's saying betting twelve K is gonna be better than checking. I don't. I don't agree with that. I don't know.
Pete is only he's not voting two pair. The problem is Pete, we don't know that he has two pair. He still has king, queen and ace king. And I wanna get value from those. And if we jam all in, um, or honestly bet by gigantic on this river. He could potentially fold those single pair of hands at this time, at this point. So we can't be blinded about the fact that he had two pair. And so if we don't bet into him, he would have called because the truth is, is we would have checked. He would have bet. We would have jammed. We would have gotten called anyways.
Yeah, we lost seven K.
Called by ace, king and king, queen and king, jack. And I think checking against this player is the way to do that.
Yeah, I don't know if I agree with this, but I mean, he knows the situation and the player tendency. This player's tendency better than we do, right? Cuz he was actually in the moment, game flow, dynamic. All that kinda matters and things we can't read into. Um, in these situations, you know, so.
I know I'm picking on him, but I mean, we got all the information we need when he bet into two, when he bet big on a flop, pre-flop, bet into two players on a flop and then bet into two players on the turn.
I think he's just always betting river.
I don't need to see anything else. I just know that he's got a big king.
Or overpay or aces.
He told us he's got a big king.
Exactly, exactly, but. Yeah, that does it for me, man. I gotta get the hell out of here. I'm scared to look at my phone. It's probably gonna be twenty-seven missed calls, but you know.
Alright, guys, do you take off? Uh, so I'll do the giveaway. No problem.
Yeah, I'll kick it over, but I just wanna say thank you guys again for being here, man. We love doing this. And we're gonna be back next week as well. Um, I think maybe, maybe it is next week. I'm playing for, I might not be here next Saturday, bro. I'm playing for main event seat.
What?
Yes, yes. Well, is it the eighteenth of the following? So I'll let you know, but we're playing for a main event seat. One of these Saturdays, one in twenty shot and your boy crushes that league. And I've won a seat before to the main through it, so we might be doing it again. But um anyways, for you guys that are new here or you noticed Bleo, check this shit out for free. Exclamation point PC and Toe's chat, my chat. Um, all the free shit that we always talk about, plus the staking opportunities. Um, webinars, all kinda good content, man. And make sure to give my man Toe a follow if you're in my stream. Get that man some love. He's a beast and one of my best friends and hooker.
There we go. There we go. It's good to hang out with you again, buddy. I missed you.
Likewise, and uh if I'm around tonight or something, I don't know. I'm probably gonna fucking, if I'm not going out, I'm studying or chilling, so.
Uh, yeah, hit me up.
Will do. Alright, guys, I'm gonna kick this host over to Toe and he's gonna run a ten dollar giveaway. Make sure to get in this chat. Uh, listen for the commands and getting that giveaway, but thank you again. Enjoy your day, man. Nah, I don't sleep much, man. Pearl Harbor says, do you ever sleep? Just because the sun gets tired, doesn't mean I do. Um, nah, man, we don't sleep much.
I don't sleep much either, actually.
Uh, fuck, fuck that shit. Oh, I almost raided this guy. I'm about to raid Toe. I'm about to raid you now, so alright, buddy. Take care, man. I'll talk to you later.
Alright, guys, here we are. So I'm gonna wait for the raid to come in and then we will kick off the uh little ten dollar giveaway PayPal or. ACR, whichever you prefer. No problem, no problem, no problem. How do you enter the giveaway, Mendo? You wait for a few seconds for sixes to send me the host. And then you're gonna type exclamation point tickets, space, max, when it's go time. When it's go time. You'll see the the chat going nuts. Here's the raid. So uh, alright, guys, welcome, welcome, welcome from Six's channel. I'm about to kick off the giveaway. Make sure you hit the follow button or something right about there, a little heart shaped icon. Like Six says, we do this every Saturday, noon eastern. Let me kick this uh giveaway off. It costs nothing. So all you have to do is exclamation point tickets, space, max, and you will be entered into the giveaway for ten dollars, either ACR or PayPal. Whichever works best for you. So, um, while that's all going on, you see him coming in the chat now. Uh, like I said, exclamation point PC in the chat, if you haven't seen it already. You get twenty free quizzes, charts for a hundred big blinds or more. And a bunch of homeworks and stuff. They do free webinars multiple times a week. It's great. There are forums, um. They have a thirty day challenge going on right now where um they said they can make you a winning player if you follow this strategy in thirty days. So check all that out. Um, and like I said, we do this every Saturday, noon eastern. So check that out as well. If you missed any part of this or any of the ones in the past and you're interested in going back and seeing some of the study streams from. From days before, um, then you can go to the YouTube channel and I will post that link out for you right now. Let me set my professional here. YouTube, there it is. Uh, you can check out any of the previous study streams we've ever done, ever. I got them all on there. Feel free to ask questions in there. I'll make sure Six gets the questions if you have questions, um, for that and all that stuff. Do I have study group with my subs? I do. Tier two and tier three subs. We do a once a month study, study, study group. We already did it for January, but uh we do it for February. It's usually the first or second week of the month. We do two hours as a study group. Uh, for that and then you get a private little link so you can re-watch that over and over again. Um, there's about almost thirty people in that group, so it's a big one. Uh, so BQ, BBBQ. Um, if you are so inclined, tier two sub or better, you will automatically get entered into that. Just hit me up. Um, I think we got some follows and stuff while I was babbling. We did. Tread Cow and uh Bluff to Bluff and two eighty-two. Thank you for those follows. I appreciate you guys. Uh, Mendo, did you get in this? You did. You're in. You're maxed out. Cool. We'll give it another thirty seconds or so for people to get in. Exclamation point ticket space, max, cost you nothing. Ten dollars either America's Cardroom or PayPal if you're not on ACR, which I think might be down right now. I think I saw something. Alright, guys, I don't see any more coming in, so I'm gonna close the giveaway. Bang. And the winner. Alright guys, I don't see anymore coming in, so I'm gonna close the giveaway. Bang. And the winner is. BQ, BBBQ, it was meant to be, it was fake. My man, congratulations. Oh, verbatim, girl. Just barely got, missed it. Verbatim, girl. You, you, you type for a living. You should be the fastest typer in here. What happened? I'm sorry, verbatim, girl. Just missed it, just missed it. BQ, BBBQ, whisper me. Let me know your ACR screen name if you'd like it that way. Or um give me an email address to send you the seven bucks on PayPal. Let me know. Oh, you did twice? Did you get in? You were, that might be. You were so fast. Yep, you did. You did. My bad. You, you gotta be the fastest typer. You gotta be. Alright, anyways, uh we're gonna throw the host over to uh Bet Andre, my man, Bet Andre. Extraordinaire from the thirst lounge. Make sure you give him some love too. I appreciate you. We'll be back tomorrow. Um eleven o'clock Pacific, so eleven, twelve, twelve, one, two o'clock Eastern, uh playing all the big guarantees on all the sites. So if you wanna come hang out and watch it all happen live, there you go. And uh that's it. That's all I got for you. Thanks for the love, guys, and I will see ya. I sit out here for much harder to, it's true, right? It's a different keyboard, I think, right? Much, much harder. Anyways, it was good to see you, verbatim, girl. Good to see all of you. I appreciate you and I'll see you tomorrow. Peace.